Eric Walters.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Sartor.
Here.
First item in the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I take a motion. Second, roll call.
Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sartor.
Yes.
DeBora.
Yes.
Vogel.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. This time the police for comments brought any item other than those in a public hearing. Anyone in the audience who should address the council. Hearing none, seeing none, moving on to item five. Consent agenda. Take a motion. Discussion comments. Roll call please.
DeBora.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yeah.
Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sartor.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is, uh, I'm not gonna get this down yet Jenny. Next item is business items. Item A, resolution two thousand nineteen fifty, authorizing two thousand dollar fund commitment for the Iowa Community Vision Project. Steve Flores, yours.
Well, great. Uh, I'm happy to be here. I was looking through my notes, um, the other night and I believe that the first conversation that, uh, I ever had on this after moving to Polk City was in February, on February seventeenth, twenty eighteen, when I sort of ran into Mayor Morse at Cummingville and, uh, introduced myself, talked about wanting to do whatever I could to support the community. We talked about, uh, connection to the High Tressle Trail. We also talked about, uh, a wayfinding project. I also counted on my notes that we've had sort of eleven meetings or conversations, um, leading up to tonight. So there's been a lot of discussion with a lot of people, city council members included and others, and I appreciate that very much. So you have the resolution before you. Basically, you've all received an invitation to a meeting on Thursday night, which talks about, uh, the, uh, Community Visioning Project. And basically, I thought I would just read that to you. So it's, uh, Community Visioning is a process that encourages visionary and strategic thinking about transportation improvements in smaller Iowa communities across Iowa. Those are communities of less than ten thousand people. Community visioning has been, um, a project that's been underway for several years and there have been many Iowa cities that have participated in community visioning. Uh, I got involved in the project. I was invited to a community visioning, uh, annual meeting. Uh, and there I met, uh, landscape architect, uh, Eric Dahl and explained to him what my interests were. He talked about, uh, that we really ought to get involved in community visioning and I agreed with him and so we've had meetings to talk about it, uh, going forward since that meeting. So, uh, community visioning would include a variety of potential projects such as developing a connector trail between Polk City and, uh, High Tressle Trail, and I have to admit that's sort of the driver for me. Wayfinding, signage, true, uh, and also improving existing trail connect- connectivity, which I think would also be great within the city and potential trail beautification projects. Cities do a lot of different projects that are related to transportation improvements. They all tend to, uh, migrate around, uh, trails, but there are, uh, trailhead efforts, uh, that some cities do, signage, there's parks, so forth and so on. So that would be up to the steering committee that would be developed after the Thursday night presentation, which would be from Eric Dahl, who's already given us one presentation to a smaller group, but has agreed to come back and talk to a larger group. That group, uh, includes about fifty people, uh, who are on the, uh, the email routing. And, uh, we tried to approach a cross-section of the city groups, uh, city committees, so forth and so on. And once we have that presentation, we would go down the road to forming the steering committee. We'd have an application process we would go through and our application would be, uh, September one. We'd have to have it in by September one. We would be told by the Community Visioning, uh, organization, which is Trees Forever, uh, if we qualify for Community Visioning for the next year by October. And then in November, we would go to our first meeting as a steering committee. We'd have the following year to work with our landscape architect to put together our plans for Community Visioning. In the end, uh, we would have, um, conceptual plans that would illustrate our transportation enhancement plan, so that we could then go forward with timelines, so forth and so on, fundraising, uh, et cetera. So that's Community Visioning in a, in a nutshell, and, uh, the big part of that is that the city has to designate two thousand dollars that would go toward a project, uh, that resulted from the Community Visioning exercise. I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Questions for Steve?
It's really kind of a no lose situation if you put two thousand into a project that you aren't doing, but, but also get the vision of getting it done. I mean, I think that's a win-win proposition, especially when you bring up the connection, which, the trail connection. I mean, that's just one example, but that would just be an amazing addition to our community. And I, it's about, I mean, I just think about it all the time, how we can, how we can make it happen, you know? So this is one route in which we can do that, uh, in the future. That's the key is to fall forward and seeing how that can happen.
And we do get an awful lot from the, um, organization in support of our efforts. I think our landscape, landscape architects said, based on their hourly rate, and we would be getting about a hundred thousand dollars worth of time donated to our community visioning effort that's paid for.
Right.
By someone.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
No, no questions from me, but I, 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 I think this is no brainer, like you said, Steve. I've, I've met with Steve and appreciate his passion and, uh, willingness to connect with the Trees Forever meeting and, um, my brain was a little slower than my mouth does a lot of times. So I was in favor of this when I thought it was three thousand and not two, when that, um, three thousand was a fee. And anytime I'm willing to pay for something that goes to the DOT, that's saying something. Um, I, I, I think this, we're the, the perfect example for something like this. We're, we're at a point where I think we can use this to, 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 to build off the great work that was done more broadly with the comprehensive plan, use that, get new feedback. I like, I like the fact that, um, we're gonna hopefully engage some folks and, and get some opinions on things. And I think we know some, some ideas. We also know some hurdles and if we can account for those and get a plan together, I, I, I'm excited and look forward to the process as much as the, the product with this. So, um, and then I know one of the things, I can't remember if you mentioned it, Steve, but the point at the end with the grant assistance, I think is a big deal too. So, um, whatever we can do, um, to, to help align with some opportunities that are out there to, to help pay for a lot of the things, whatever things we identify that do, I think this is an absolute slam dunk. Looking forward to it. So just to emphasize the, the Thursday meeting, um, you know, for anybody interested in, uh, taking liberties with, uh, but, you know, if there any, is anybody that, that is interested that doesn't know about it or, or, uh, would like to hear more of that, that's the opportunity to do so.
I just, I'd just like to say thank you for getting involved and for helping us make this happen, because it's something we've thought about, like Dave said, and talked about, just never seemed to be able to get it to where it needs to be. And oftentimes, it just takes somebody with your ambition to make it happen. So thank.
So, uh, I would just like to personally thank Mayor Morse, who, um, when I approached him, didn't go the other direction it comes to go. And, uh, the many discussions we've had, uh, all along and also to the city council, who already participated. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions, comments, motions?
Happy to make motion on the resolution twenty nineteen fifty.
Second, roll call please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sartor.
Yes.
DeBora.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yeah.
Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, item seven, reports in particulars, Pope County radio presentation. Who's kicking it off?
I'll start the computer.
I hope this is shorter than last presentation on Pope County radio that we had a few years ago.
It's brief, it's nice. I'll, I'll give kind of a real talking. So there's a, an option for us. The Pope County is moving towards with Raycom, public-private, they've had since twenty twelve, the current iteration for our radio system for police and fire, just by South Pope County Sheriff's Department. There's two options. We cover kind of specifics. We have a current contract that runs through twenty twenty-four with Pope County, uh, through a twenty eighty agreement that goes through Pope County Sheriff's Department with Raycom. Right now, we're in that agreement that expires in twenty twenty-four. There's an option, the state built a new statewide radio system for the state law enforcement entities and emergency managers used, that municipalities can also kind of piggyback onto for redundancy to their current systems. And there's all different levels of what they can commit to. In order to, for Pope County to have that as a possible redundancy, it's called ISICS, is the acronym, the state system. They're working with Raycom trying to come up with a solution where that can be used as a redundancy as well. It'd still be dispatched by Pope County, but there'd be the set of state towers if some major disaster would happen, or large-scale event. So Raycom is asking, the investment that they're making is to build an additional tower that'll be on a hundred twenty-six going over Zellcar and, and northeast twenty-nine. That really won't benefit us a whole lot, but they have a lacking coverage there. Raycom would build that tower, allow the usage to Pope County, then they pay, we pay for that. Also, within the next few months, we would get all new handheld radios, police and fire, one for one for what we have. And it's a, of, of upgrading our radio hardware and then what its capabilities are to be able to talk to the state towers as a redundancy. So there's been a long series of negotiations in Pope County, giving different concessions, and I'll let Jim go over it in detail here. But basically, there's two options. We have our current contract through twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-one, next budget year, we would have to start paying radio services to Pope County, remember, that we haven't had to pay to them for their dispatch center. If you sign the agreement, option B, and then we would be with them until twenty twenty-four, and then we have to renegotiate individually. Every entity can do what they want with it. The option A, that they go over and there's an, the agreement that we have to, uh, sign, decide what to do by September one. Option A would be to do nothing and stay with the current contract. We keep our old radios and we don't have that capability. And I'm not, I'm not trying to sell the Raycom thing one way or another. Personally, I like.
Pay dispatch.
Right.
Services.
Right.
Effective.
Twenty twenty-four.
July one of twenty-one, if we don't.
If we don't.
So that changes the current agreement, um, even though we don't agree and chose, choose to stay with the current agreement, it does, it won't stay the same. You have to pay dispatch fees, which, like I said, I think what I read in the current agreement is there's no dispatch fees until twenty twenty-four ends, um, and then we make a decision to go wherever we go. So regardless of what we do, we're, we're gonna pay dispatch fees. Uh, and they've outlined that, I think in twenty twenty-four, it's slated to be just over twenty-two thousand. And then they identify twenty-three, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, well, it jumps to, um.
Like twenty-six.
Oh, just under twenty-five or just under twenty-six. But it's based on per cap. So that's as our population exists today. So I would assume it will go up even more than what they predict.
There, there is a clause in agreement that it cannot go more than three percent a year though. That's the max. But for the, but they're asking for, for the new agreement, a six-year extension. So we would be in this agreement until twenty thirty.
Oh, good.
The benefits of that are, we get the new radios at no cost. We get the possible, you know, or the potential redundancy once it's all worked out with the state system. And we don't have to pay dispatch fees for, for three additional years. But if we stayed at the current, we start in point twenty-one. If we sign the new agreement to extend the contract, Raycom is saying their investment's the tower and the new radios. Pope County's paying for that. And then we don't, and also we don't have to pay for the service fees until twenty twenty-four. And those do start, they start out around, it ranges like twenty-two. And then it's like, I think, maybe, I mean, it was twenty, high twenty-fours, but it cannot go up annually more than three percent. And that's based on a camera, which index, inflation index they reference in there.
So what's our neighbors doing? Because that's important.
Million dollar question.
I know, right? I know. And, and, and the last time we went through this, I remember that was a big issue too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, not, but it does matter.
Yeah. And obviously with numbers like this.
Yeah.
Council decision.
Yep.
For the neighbors as well. Um, it.
But, but you're also like, but we're also getting pushed into a situation where we're not gonna, we have to make a decision and we're gonna pay more and we're not able to negotiate that.
Right. Um, there was three big asks. We attended Polk City. I attended the meeting. Um, the sheriff called, Raycom was there. They explained the new radios. We didn't even know what radios we were gonna get. We had no input on that. Um, we feel a little different about it. Trey, you know, and Trace has some history with them and I don't. Um, I know what our competitor provides.
Yep.
Uh, and I can tell you, it's a good product. Not that our service is, is bad here. It's, um, not having any input. And that was a big ask at the meeting that, uh, the sheriff called with, with a lot, with all the fire chiefs, is that we want to have some kind of governance system in place so that we are heard, uh, not, not just, uh, put a more of a board, uh, and.
Can we just get new radios? Twenty twelve.
Yeah, they're five years old. Now, the problem with the radios that we currently have is that, uh, they don't contain the hardware to communicate with the ISICS system, with the statewide system, with Westcom, and then Des Moines moving towards this too.
Which is exactly what they told us in twelve, from the previous version of.
Except you went from high band to eight hundred meg at that point in time, when, which was able to take care of some dead spots. They put the tower up north of town here. And so, so from a ability in town, you're, you're able to talk at least from A to B.
Right.
Back before twenty twelve, you weren't able to do that.
Right. So it also has a software, uh, upgrade that our current radios won't take, uh, that, that this new one will. And we'll again be able to, uh, talk to Westcom through a patch, which is a three-minute, or a thirty-second delay. Uh, the bigger issue is the CAD systems don't communicate. So Pope County's CAD won't communicate with Westcom or the city of Des Moines' new, uh, new system. It has like a three-minute delay at best. Uh, and, and the examples have been with Johnston and, and Urbandale. And they have, at best, it's a three-minute, they've had up to a ten, fifteen-minute delay and be able to communicate that mutilated request.
Because Johnston's on Pope County and Urbandale's on West.
Right, right. Um, so is this the city of Des Moines change that we're?
Well, we go through this.
Yeah, we can go through this and, go ahead, Fredo. So the history, obviously you guys know, is that in twenty twelve, uh, Westcom basically, uh, had already been to eight hundred. The sheriff's office needed to go to eight hundred, or anybody that, that was dispatched by the sheriff's office wanted to go, had a desire to go to eight hundred because of the communication gaps with VHF. Uh, Des Moines maintained their four hundred megahertz VHF system, and that's what they're using to this day. The problem with all this is that none of the three different dispatch centers could communicate. Um, so if you was on Pope County, you couldn't communicate with Westcom, you couldn't communicate with Des Moines and vice versa. Um, recently, Des Moines just approved a twelve million dollar upgrade and they're going to the state ISICS system, the same system that Westcom's on. Now, there'll be two different trunks, but you'll still be able to intermarry and, and communicate fairly quickly.
Very high level of interoperability, large-scale fence.
Right.
Right. We're staying with the Raycom system. We, we won't. It'll take, it'll require a special patch. Um, a little bit more history with the state E nine on one commission. They collect surplus funds from the phone lines, both landline and cellular, and then they decide where those monies go. Each dispatch center gets a portion of that money. Well, I shouldn't say that. Each county E nine on one board gets, uh, receives those, those funds, and then they decide where that goes. Uh, Pope County E nine on one board just distributes that currently evenly amongst all three dispatch centers. Um, so again, recently, the state commission has, uh, said that they feel like we have too many dispatch centers in Iowa. There's a hundred and ten dispatch centers in Iowa, serving ninety-nine counties. Uh, so they feel that's redundant and they've offered, um, kind of some buyout money to, to narrow it down and consolidate, kind of like what they did with the schools. Hasn't been a lot of takers in that area.
To co-locate, not necessarily.
Right.
Join in a center, but in the same location and, and, um, take away some of that duplication of effort.
So Pope County E nine on one board, their recent activity is, um, they, in sixteen, they developed a subcommittee titled Interoperability Committee. They were challenged to develop a solution to make it so all three agencies, all three dispatch centers could communicate, uh, with these without hesitation. And currently, they're no further along than they were three years. Uh, that is the message I got from that. So recently, they passed a motion to hire a consultant, develop the technical plan that allows all three agencies to communicate better. Uh, they, and that passed. Today, they voted to enhance the RFP, to hire a consultant, not only address the technical part of this, but the operational part of it, the strategic part. Come up with a five to ten-year plan. How, how do we make it so all three agencies communicate and/or is it feasible to consolidate?
And they've never added that. They hired a consultant in twenty fifteen, but it was strictly, how can all of the dispatch, all of the public safety entities in the metro get proper dispatching? And they, they came back, said it's being properly dispatched. It's just not them. They, that was the end of the study, but it was, it's not effective efficient, having three PSAPs, they call the dispatch centers, the, the way it was set up.
Right.
Jim? The, um, Pope County had given till September first for a deadline and decision. Does this decision today to hire a consultant push that deadline back?
So it doesn't. Um, in fact, the Friday meeting I referred to earlier, they, they told us we would have a deadline of July first. Since we've received the new agreement as late as Friday, uh, they've moved that to September first. So they gave us an extra month. However, I don't even know that the consultant will be selected, let alone any results back by the September first deadline. And the sheriff said today in this meeting I went to that we voted, um, that we really didn't care about the consultant's, uh, recommendation, that they were gonna move forward with a separate system regardless. And we, honestly, we either get on board or we don't, and that's our decision made. Um, so the dispatch office, uh, again, has proposed that, um, our radios include hardware that, that will necessitate a patch from one system to the other, from Westcom to the sheriff's office or Des Moines to the sheriff's office. Uh, we believe that this is, was what they consider to be phase two of the original agreement in two thousand twelve. Pope County Board of Supervisors had allotted four million dollars to purchase radios, and then, this is wrong, I'm sorry. This is, was the original proposal that was unwritten, was that, that each city would pay back. With this agreement that we got Friday, they've taken that out, that they're gonna spend the four million on the portables and we will have to pay it back.
And I followed, phone call the person, you know, the project manager, Pope County this morning. He, he said that's exactly how it reads there. You'll never be asked to pay back any of the hardware costs, just the dispatching fees that are detailed in the agreement.
The verbal, uh, proposal was also that we would have to, if we wanted a maintenance agreement, we would have to pay for that. And now with this written agreement that we got late Friday afternoon, they'll pay for the maintenance agreement as well.
And that's about additional probably eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred between our two departments.
For the city, yeah. So, uh, Raycom's proposal, uh, I find it kind of interesting that they come up with this proposal with a deadline of September first, right before we decided that we was gonna hire a consultant to, uh, decide all this. But the, the purchase of new radios to replace the current ones, uh, law enforcement's radios will be encrypted, and they're about forty-three hundred dollars apiece. And then fire EMS would not be encrypted, and they're about thirty-five dollars apiece. And I have some discrepancy with that. Uh, we, we go to enough events together that if we try to communicate together, uh, if one radio is not encrypted, then the whole system's not encrypted. So if we go to an active shooter event at the school, we won't be able to communicate because it won't be, the communication would not be encrypted. So I'm, I, I struggle with having two different radios, one for law enforcement, one for fire and EMS. Um, but once again, and then this is kind of a funny thing too. Friday, they, uh, Raycom demonstrated this Harris XL two hundred radio, and the written agreement says that we're getting the Harris XL one eighty-five radio. So we've not seen specs on that radio. I don't know what it is. I don't know how it's different from the two hundred. I'm familiar with the two hundred because that's why I carried Knoxville. Um, and it's, honestly, it's a pretty amazing radio. You can, uh, do crazy things like take the antenna off and it becomes a cell phone, dial numbers, hold nine yards. Uh, I don't know what this one eighty-five does.
And the one eighty-five will, does have first net capabilities for cell phone usage off the first net network.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know anything about the one eighty-five. Um, it does extend from the two thousand twenty-four, and Raycom felt like that was necessary to recoup their, the cost of making our radios super cheap, which I'm not sure that's cheap, but, uh, and then installing the tower north of Ankeny. Uh, they felt in order to recoup those funds, they had to extend the contract to twenty thirty. The downside to that is, instead of being four to five years away from maybe all of us being able to talk, we've just extended it to eleven years away. Uh, but, but under the written agreement, and I think this is the one thing that Trace and I do agree on, it's a super sweet pot for us. I mean, that, it's very little expense. Uh, I think if you go to the next slide, open it all up, if you will, that's it. If you look at that last column on the, uh, C bullet, the cost of the, the radios to Pope County is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that's money that originally they proposed we would have to top up. And, uh, there was no definition of when we would have to pay that back, what kind of timeframe we would pay it back, if there was any interest associated or anything. So fortunately, they come, you know, came back with their written agreement and have, have offered to give those radios to us. Now.
When you see the cost sharing there, they didn't denote that very well. That's the dispatch fees.
Right.
That's our share of what we would have to pay. And that is based on the forty-six hundred population. So, you know, that may be twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars. But once.
Yeah.
The agreement said they cannot go up more than three percent a year. There's a clause in agreement, the state said.
So what's the difference between, so it's twenty-two? For the twenty-one, twenty-two, so period is twenty-two, six, fifty-three?
So if we stayed with current contract and we did not opt to extend, that twenty, that point twenty-one, next July one, that's what we have to start paying dispatch services.
But if we do agree. If we do agree.
Then we don't pay.
Then we don't pay till twenty-four, twenty-five, and it's the twenty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-three cents.
That's the radio.
No.
The radios.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Like, we don't have to pay for anything.
Right.
Including the radios.
Right on.
And if we don't sign the extension, so these radios, uh, they're supposed to be a five-year lifespan. Uh, so they're five years old right now. Ours are five and a half, I think. I don't know if we got them for sure. I'm trying to dig through records to find that. That doesn't mean they, they, they quit working. It just means that their, their hardware within them and their, you know, they get beat up pretty good. Their service life can be starting to decline. And I'm not saying I agree or think this is the best deal possible, but if we, we stay on it, there's no, we have no guarantee of new hardware, and we could be looking at that hundred eighty thousand being a two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty thousand are outweighed before then for new radios for police and fire at that point. And it's, it's, and Jim and I don't disagree on a lot of it. We have, our, we actually disagree, we have different viewpoints, because I look at from skill, but I'm pretty sure that Ankeny Police and Fire is staying with Pope County. There are, Pope County and Ankeny are two number one backups for law enforcement. Jim has a different temp, or different geographic footprint to cover, where it extends into other areas that could switch to West.
Has Johnston's moved their.
Yeah.
Territory towards.
Drives and.
Yeah. Drives and Ranger.
So I don't want to, I mean, we disagree. We have different elements of operational effectiveness for it.
Right. Just different needs. And I don't know. I, I do think Ankeny will probably stay with Pope County. I, Johnston's on the fence, is what, is what I understand.
There was a lot of jockeying back in twenty-ten, you know, timeframe when all this was going on too, and who was gonna stay and who was gonna jump to. And, I mean, at the end of the day, let's face it, and I remember making a similar presentation, but we're gonna be left with no choice. I mean, that's what it comes down to. We're gonna, I mean.
What do you guys want? I would love, I, I would love to stay with Polk County's, um, service. I think it could be better, but if we get input, if we could have a say in how they dispatch it, if we could get a dedicated fire dispatcher, uh, that would be awesome. Having said that, I'm not opposed, I mean, I'm not opposed to Polk County Dispatch. My end goal would be that we all be able to talk to one another.
Right.
That's my end goal, and that, and this makes that, uh, six more years away from being reality, to be honest. But because little Polk City doesn't agree, I don't know that that makes it any more real if we jump in.
Yes, selfishly for our city, the extension of the contract makes the most sense physically.
Fiscally, it makes the most sense.
Uh, and operationally for me, for Jim, not necessarily as much operationally because of the different areas they serve geographically.
Yeah.
Not me speak for you, but that's-
No, that's true.
We've been talking an hour a day on this for probably a couple of weeks, trying to figure out the best way to, to go with it. Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy with the sheriff's department. I don't dislike Raycom, but it's, you have a, have a private company steering what you're doing publicly. And it's not directly midland, and when you look at, you know, to us with smaller budgets, that potential hundred eighty thousand dollar outlay, and it being taken care of, it's hard not to.
It's been a political thing that's been going on for years though.
Well, and I, I would be as bold as also say that I've, I've been dispatched by a system that isn't governed by a law enforcement-
Right.
Agency, no offense, but, you know, uh, they have a whole different mentality, uh, than fire and EMS.
That's a very poor, but-
And, and it just isn't, uh, the, the director did not have a law enforcement background, and things just seemed to go a lot smoother. Uh, if we was to be able to be involved in some type of governance board, could have a say and input.
And there is a clause in there, too, so they'll establish a board.
It, it's, if I remember right, it's not necessarily a board, it's a, I'm missing the term, uh, advisory committee. And which exists in this current agreement. That's been affected. I, I mean, it hasn't been that affected.
So, the bottom line is, right now, you're just putting this on our radar because we're gonna have to make a decision before September first.
September first.
And something will change probably about five more times between now and then.
Well, at least now we have it in writing, uh, this is like-
No, I know, I'm just saying.
I don't think you've had a chance to look at it.
It was-
We'll send it to you.
So, we got it Friday, late afternoon. I called Polk County, left a message. They got back to me this morning.
Yeah.
And so really, we're right up, right on the tip of the wave on this, is figuring out, we wanted to-
Had to change a lot of the slides just because we didn't change the-
No.
There was things we didn't have in writing, I mean, nothing's writing.
Yeah, last week when we talked about putting together this presentation, it was because July first, that's-
Sure.
Right. And now it's been pushed back, so it's been very fluid.
Very fluid.
Couple of weeks.
Well, I mean, I guess this goes back to, here's a disadvantage of having three dispatch centers in one county. It always has been. Um, continues to be an issue, and years ago, when they started down this road, you know, even in the nineties of, you know, the goal was to get everybody to talk to each other. And the fact you're saying you're gonna push that back to twenty thirty is mind boggling, but, um, but, but I think we're also gonna be left with no choice, similar to what we were the last time. You can't be without radios, you can't be without a dispatch center. What choice are you gonna have?
And, and who has half a million dollars to come up with new radios and globals?
And they know that.
They know, yeah.
And that was part of the, that was part of the disadvantage entering into the Raycom agreement back in two thousand ten-ish, when all of this stuff was going down. Because now, I remember having these conversations. This day would come, and here we are.
I, I honestly, and I'm not disagreeing with Jim, I honestly don't believe it will be six more years before we start seeing better operations solutions. The technology that's, that's coming out every year. Now, will it retard that process? Absolutely.
Well-
And it could be six years, but I think there, there's some new options that have been coming out, no question, with virtual patches and virtual trunk systems. And I'm talking way out of my, my knowledge base.
I'm not, technology, you know, radios is a big thing to get your arms around, but, but there is a difference between interoperability and operability. And my goal would be that we'd all be, have operability and not mess around with connecting through patches, and we should be one system, and, and, uh, I think it's Johnston's chief came, he comes from Sioux City where a grant was, uh, awarded, and they built one dispatch center that served not just three cities, but three states, and it was successful. Man, I wish we was there, and we're just not, and I, and I don't know that we ever would.
But I think one thing that is important to note, even though that we can complain about the agreement that we're in, and I'd be the first to probably stand in line and complain about some of it, is that we don't have to go back that many years ago to recognize how much things have improved since then. And that even though it's not perfect yet, what you had ten years ago, what you had fifteen years ago, the inability to even talk from the square to somebody at the fire station.
Oh, receive dispatch.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, so there have been a lot of advancements made, and if they can continue to do that, you know, hopefully by twenty thirty, this is a whole lot better. It just, it just sucks when we're put in a position that we don't really have a choice, right?
Yeah.
That, that's all it is, and we don't have a choice.
I'll feel much different once we know for sure that Ankeny's gonna stay with the county.
Absolutely.
Johnston. If, if those two departments stay with county, I'll-
But you're gonna have a heck of a choice to make if one goes and the other doesn't.
Right.
You know, I will add, I've been in Polk County fifteen years in law enforcement, and the difference operationally is night and day from, from when I started in Windsor Heights, two thousand five is a fourteen years. I mean, if you walked in the house, couldn't get-
Right.
Enter out on your court. That's, and for people, and I'm ignorant, all of us have to do research, the, the reason eight hundred megahertz is so, it's a P twenty-five, it's a digital signal, penetrates buildings a lot better. You meet in a basement most of the time and get your signal. So, there's been some huge improvements. They, they used to be about an eighty-five percent coverage rate for the county outside, and this new agreement pledges ninety-five percent in building.
In building, yeah.
Coverage. So, there are, there are improvements, but the interoperability of course really falling apart. We haven't been able, and there's, honestly, it's such a diverse and dynamic battleground, if I have a better term, with all the public safety entities in Polk County. From all the firearms, all the police departments, municipalities, the sheriff's department. It's, it is a, a sticky, we keep trying to get everybody together on something like that.
Well, and, and with Westcom's system, and, and even Des Moines going to the ISIC system, it's governed by the state. And so that's another, I mean, there's pros, there's cons to going to the state system too, uh, this, right now, we're trying to, uh, we filed for approval for us to be able to get on the state system and, and all of the Polk County, uh, agencies, and we still haven't received approval for that. Uh, we're fearful that we'll overload their system. It's like, listen, we need to be able to talk to each other. So, yeah.
Bring, bring back what you can when you can.
Right.
Cause I'm sure, you know, I mean, at that point, I think that our, our job is to support you guys and what you tell us.
I don't think there'll be a lot of major changes.
I don't think there, there shouldn't be any changes, I-
Yeah, and I, as long as legal signs are on.
No, they've issued this written agreement, so it'll probably be the, pretty close.
That was the big change, you know, cause, cause what we're being told and what they sent us in writing are really two completely different, uh, problems. Any questions? Yeah, more of a heads up, so we'll be prepared and we'll send out the documents once we have the chance to look at it, see what's your thoughts. Let you guys review it. And ask away whatever questions, and we could certainly get to the right channels, ask if we don't know.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
So, since we're going on to reports in particular, she has got anything else since you're standing up?
Uh, I just had one, just a pat on the back for Lieutenant Sipker. He stopped a drug dealer leaving the beach last weekend and seized a sizable amount of drugs and four thousand seven hundred dollars in cash. But we don't, I don't have to keep that, that has to go through the forfeiture process, but and on top of all his administrative duties, he's still managing to get on the street, makes significant stops and the rest, so very proud of him. And all the officers did a great job. I mean, to just highlight him, but when you have ten hours a week to work on the street, you still manage to snag something like that, that's pretty significant.
A little dizzy.
Yeah.
Raise it, I'll call on you. You got anything?
I do. I'm excited to announce that, um, uh, Polk City will be the first host town for our BTP Monday, September ninth. Although that is a day-long event, although the actual activities on the square will be kind of three thirty to ten thirty timeframe, but they roll in in mid-morning, uh, do live broadcasts, all that sort of jazz, so. I have formed a steering committee to help me pull this off, and will be speaking to department heads and how to make it a fun, family safe.
Great job.
Good job, Rachel.
People are excited.
Yeah. Anything from the library? You got nothing going on, do you?
Very loud.
Very loud.
Something Jane.
Yeah, well, you got, is it, something going on or what? Hey, good job. I heard good stuff out of your event on the square.
Certainly a good turn.
Thanks for keeping kids entertained, mine included. Appreciate that a lot. Amy, anything? Anything from down here?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, with the third street rejuvenation a year from now, was having some discussion with some folks about that. And where would we stand, and how could we talk to Polk County about getting bike lanes along the road out to, uh, city limits? If they're, they're going that far, aren't they?
We don't have an agreement with them, yes, at this point.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, cause we've heard from the people at, uh, Creek Townhomes about the accessibility to come up, up to the town without walking on the highway and-
So, I did speak to Kathleen about this probably within the last six weeks, and there was a study that was done.
Remember when?
Anyway, study that was done, you guys, uh, received all of that information at the time. Um, I asked her to just take a look at it and, you know, see if there's any ways to readjust it. If you remember right, the road alignment out there is off. And, um-
Little or no right away.
Yeah, it's a mess, and drainage and some other issues out there, so I think that, um, you know, in order for us to do it, the numbers back then were kind of scary, and I, anyway, I think that they were gonna take another look at them to see if we can have that information, you know, cause again, if you just dip out to there, um, without doing it, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense, but that being said, putting a Band-Aid on it too, you know, you need to do it right, and so, um, anyway, that, those, that had been done, and, um, I have it, I just don't have it with me, but, you know, we need to, we need to just take another look at it, and that's what we, I asked Kathleen to do it that long time.
Cause I think the bike lanes up Broadway are very well received. You know, the, I don't know about for walking, cause we do have sidewalks up Broadway now, but-
Yeah, it, it's, if that, that area from North Side to Vista is a mess, as you know, so, yeah. Um, I think it's just one of those things that as we get into our planning for next year, um, and into our long-term stuff, I think that's something we just have to take a look at and put on the list if we can find a way to pay for it. And to, to that end, we had a meeting, um, this last week with the MPO, uh, and that was one of the projects that we did talk about, but I mean, obviously, that wouldn't be anything they would be able to do next year, but it was, uh, a project that I think could be identified, uh, as a future proj- project, um, that we potentially use MPO funding or help assistance with.
Right.
Um, in, in the spirit of Jim and Trace's update on government bureaucracy taking a long time to do nothing, uh, the DOT is having a meeting on June eighteenth on the Hundred Twenty-First Street in one corridor, planning on hearing much of any progress, but there's another meeting.
I was just gonna, um, I was gonna go back to the library real quick and just, um, recognize Jamie for, I just noticed you went to three different events in a month. You know, for like, to keep, keep networked and, and, you know, the Grow for Google, the ALA Spring Symposium Director Roundtable. I think that, you know, those are things you don't have to go to, but you choose to go to, uh, to keep informed and, and talk with others in the same industry, and just want to thank you for doing that, and keep involved.
Dom, you got anything?
No, sir.
Perfect.
Ron, and take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the favor.
Aye.
Bye, Andy, I forgot you were there. Bye. Bye. Safe travels.
Apparently she bruised.
Yeah, I hope your phone doesn't burn up. My goodness, that's a two and a half hours of sitting on the phone, man. I don't even know where she's at.
We're blue past, like this.
Oh, yeah, okay.